Hi, everyone. How you doing? I see it's seven oh one.
Hey Jenny, how are you?
Good evening, everyone.
Hello, everyone. I just texted some folks.
Unfortunately Valerie is not gonna attend the the meeting tonight. She emailed me and somehow she lost her dog last night. Yeah, unfortunately, they're having a hard time, so. I wish them some comfort.
Hey, everyone, um, a little bit of my apology for being a little behind. We have received reports and confirmation that ICE was in our city. Um, earlier today by the AutoZone Queenstown area, okay? So I'm, I was dealing with that situation, so uh, my apology for the delayed in. And um, it's definitely been a very hard day for everybody. Okay. Um, I'd like to call this meeting to order today, um, October twenty first. Tuesday twenty twenty five at seven oh two P M. This is a work session of the mayor and council. Um, I'm gonna call your names, let me know if you're here. Jenny.
Present.
Joseph.
Present.
Danielle.
Present.
And Valerie let us know that she will need and uh, she might be, she's being excused out. Okay, so she'll be able to make it to this meeting and she makes it, she might be able to make it late, alright? Thank you guys so much. Um, we're gonna, uh, so we have um, forum to be able to carry on this meeting. We're gonna move I to item number two, review of the agenda. This is a five minute. Uh, Joseph, can you like help me read the agenda in the meantime while I put myself together after I, what I've been doing? Go ahead.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, number two item, review of the agenda, five minutes. The mayor and council review the agenda for the meeting, adding or deleting topics of interest or discussion. Three, presentation and discussion of code compliance department, first quarter report, fifteen minutes. The mayor and council receive a presentation from Ms Alma Ferrafino, Director of Code Compliance. Presentation, number four, presentation and discussion of economic development department, first quarter report, fifteen minutes. The mayor and council receive a presentation from Mr Ronald Hopkins, Director of Economic Development. Five, presentation and discussion on an ordinance codifying the Mount Rainier Green Team and disbanding the Mount Rainier Environmental Protection Board, twenty minutes. Councilmember Joseph Chakuta will present an ordinance to mayor and council and codifying the Mount Rainier Green Team and disbanding the Mount Rainier Environmental Protection Board. Six, presentation and discussion on council voting, twenty minutes. Councilmember Danielle Carter will give a presentation on the council rules and procedures to the mayor and council, have a discussion on council voting. Seven, presentation of minutes, five minutes. The city clerk will present the October seventh twenty 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 five legislative minutes to the mayor and council. Eight, adjournment.
Thank you so much. Can you go ahead and read the coming events, please, for me?
Upcoming events, Halloween parade and trunk or treat, October twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. Five fifteen P M, Thomas S Stone Elementary School Parade starts at Richardson Park. From the Earth to the Stars Over the Moon with Barbie Community Event, November first, eleven A M to four P M at the Mount Rainier Nature Center. Veterans Day Flag Ceremony Brunch, November eleventh, ten A M to twelve P M, Police Department Community Room. Sweaty sweater fun run, December sixth, twenty twenty five, nine A M to twelve P M, starts in Memorial Park and ends at thirty third Street Parish Street. Um, breakfast and photo with Santa, December thirteenth, twenty twenty five, ten A M to top P M, Mount Rainier Nature Center.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, council, uh, uh, thank you for bearing with me. It's like a lot of information in my brain right now with everything that's happening. But I'm trying to make sure at least my mind is put together. It is just a lot to deal. You know, with it. Um, so you guys have heard uh, the review of the agenda. Is there anything you'd like to add to lead? Um, please let me know. Uh, Danielle, I see your hand.
Thank you. Um, yes, I'm going to remove my agenda item for this meeting, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alright, hearing uh, none, we are moving with the agree agenda. Uh, thank you, Melissa. Okay, presentation and discussion on code compliance department first quarter report. The mayor and council receive a presentation from Ms Alma Ferrafino, Director of Code Compliance. Alma, it's wonderful to have you tonight. We have you here basically every meeting. Um, uh, thank you for the work that you and your team are doing and we are looking forward to um, your report. Thank you. You're muted, Alma.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you, City Manager, uh, Mayor and Council for having uh, me here, also residents, um, for the first quarter report for code compliance F Y twenty twenty six. Um, and a brief uh, review of my report, uh, is an overview of the department activities conducted during uh, the reporting period. It highlights uh, the case volumes, compliance actions, community outreach, and progress towards uh, departmental uh, goals. And the purpose of this report is to ensure transparency, track performance, productivity, and support compliance with the community. A little bit of um, overview on this, um, you know, it's just summarizing a little bit of our activities as a department in whole. Um, all the cases um, that we're um, reviewing, um, the completion um, with respect to everything that um, we receive as far as like um, calls of complaints or concerns um, coming from uh, residents, uh, property owners, tenants, and um, business owners. Um, we engage with the community, um, mostly, uh, you know, through our communication, um, we talk about emails, texts, phone calls, uh, person to person. Um, the inspectors and and the whole team is always um, reaching to the goal of implementing different um, ways of improving that communication with um, I guess our residents and the community and all. Um, when it comes to the completion of permits and licensing, um, I usually like to give a um, prospect of how many um, permits we process uh, on the quarterly. Um, building permits, solar permits, dumpsters. Um, and you get an idea of exactly how many um, permits we process, and this is something that's done um, by our admin, um, Emily and um, myself. Um, when it comes to vacant registration properties, rental applications, uh, business, church um, applications, and some of the citation payments that come in. Um, quarterly revenue for code compliance, um, I like to give a brief description of every month that we receive in. Uh, for the month of July, we have um, three thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. Um, in August, we had a revenue of a hundred and seventy five thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. In September, we had a revenue of fifteen thousand um, fifty one dollars. And in all revenue totals for the department is a hundred and ninety four thousand dollars, um, three hundred and ninety one dollars. And that's for the three months. Um, also, another way that I keep track of, um, you know, the revenue that comes through the code compliance is I have a graph um, that I complete every month, um, to make sure that I keep track of everything that comes in as far as uh, revenues into the C D, and as you can see, um, it actually tells you also the trends by month. Um, inspector reports, um, we usually have a uh, weekly report. Um, it's done based on the availability of the inspectors as well because of you know, how busy they become, notice of violations issued, door hangers, court trials, citations issued, certified letters, stop work orders, uh, voluntary compliance, rental inspections, um, and we have two type of rental inspections. Of course, you have the residential rentals and we also have the apartment complex that we get done. Um, court ordering inspections that we're having, um, some come in also. As far as business and churches, um, you know, those are basically done at the beginning of the year, um, usually February, January, February, February, March, um, and we also keep track of um other situations, but um, you'll see that um, when it comes to the inspectors, they do stay busy um, throughout the months. Um, presentations and inspections, um, we didn't have any presentations to mayor and council um, on those three months. Um, I usually do design review board uh, meetings. I did not have anything. Um, just to give you a little brief um, on also what we're um, going hand to hand, um, working with um, D P I inspector, um, proactively uh, working, making sure that we go back to all our businesses, our churches, and even our uh, apartment complex, we're making sure that they do have a current uh, use and occupancy, um, you know, for the establishment, and that means that if anything needed to be changed, uh, because of an owner or anything, um, it does need to be changed and we're helping them to get that done. Um, trainings and activities, um, we usually keep a quarterly meeting uh, with Z O A and that is the code compliance, um, code enforcement actually for the whole state of Maryland. Um, I do keep also um, having trainees with permit technicians um, just to grow that base and in-house training, um, we started uh, in-house training with um, some of our partners in other municipalities, which is really great for us. Um, inspectors attending more court than ever, I can assure you of that. And actually um, winning more cases um, than ever, so uh, very busy when it comes to the whole department and 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 complete. Um, educating our staff is basically something that I really, really take serious. Um, I wanna make sure that, you know, the team that we have gets a knowledge base, um, you know, growing every, every month if it's possible, I C C, Z O A, ACE. Um, we have in the new system, Camp Gato, so that helps us a lot. Um, being trans- transparent, um, in code compliance, um, is something that I definitely as uh, personally.
Alma, are you still there? I think you you left. So I think her, um. She dropped by accident.
Yes, I think her computer died, she.
So, I I will tell you, um, there is a question in the chat, Julie, while we wait for her, when it comes to the spike, when it, um, to the apartment building, um, the rental license are are the rental licenses are, they go through different months through the year, so depending how many of the apartments are in that same month, you will see like an increase on it, so it's not like uh, one month and all them um, submit their licenses. Okay, um, we'll weigh a little bit on on Alma. Uh, but Mr Kamali, is there anything else you would like to add to this, or?
No, I'm sorry, uh, just, you know, waiting for Alma, the department is doing a great job, and as you see, the information and the report that was provided, I can, I can continue and, you know, the things that she has. Uh, just read off the, you know, presentation if we have to, otherwise we're good.
I mean.
I am so sorry. My laptop said it was full of the battery and all of the sun, it just went off. I'm so sorry, my apologies.
You you came right on time, cause Mr Kamali was ready to continue your presentation and you said, I'm here, and you reappear out of uh, thin air, Alma. It was hilarious, uh, but thank you for um, bringing us back. I did answer one of the questions that Chad, and what was it, a spike in August? Um, I did make the statement that the licenses are not just in one month for the apartments, they're in various months through the year. So sometimes they pile up in in one month, they're assigned couple of them, and that's the reason why some months might see more activity for licenses and apartments than than others.
So let me, let me um, add to that also that, so we have um, apartment properties that expired on on different months, so sometimes you'll see the spike in the uh, revenue and it's because um, of those rentals that come in actually, um, and, you know, that's that, that's the whole difference.
So thank you, Julie, for that question, Lisa, buy us some time while we're waiting for you, but go on with your presentation, Alma.
Okay, so um, milestones and activities, um, we have attended uh, every single, um, program that there is um, through the city, um, that's something that personally I like to do. I know most of my um, teammates um, cannot do it, but I do attend, uh, I did attend P D Natural Night Out, um, perform court inspections, Employee Engagement Day, we enjoyed it very much, um, thank you to everyone that made um, us employees feel um, valued.
Nice. You have, how many more slices do you have, Alma?
Um.
Just a few more?
Few more.
Okay, that's fine. I wasn't sure if this was the last one, go ahead.
But um, no, just a, just an overall um, information, um, just wanted to say that, uh, you know, we're here to definitely um, address any situation, um, when it comes to code compliance. I do appreciate um, my teammates, um, you know, when it comes to the code inspectors that we have nowadays, let me just assure you that uh, they are on hand. Um, they're very, very, very um, knowledgeable at their peak of, um, you know, they came into our department newly code. So everything that they learned is basically when they first came in, which is great, the way they they actually have learned so much, and when we go to our meetings in Z O A, um, you know, the way they're presented, everybody, you know, gives us that, um, you know, high regards and and lets us know how much they also try to help each other, um, when you know, questions are are asked. But that's my presentation for today, um, I'm sorry about the mishap, but
I know.
My laptop was dying.
You're, you're fine. So I'm gonna open it to council if they have a question, council, what question each, alright? Uh, but then we'll go around, if you have like twenty questions, send it to the city manager, because also wanna have enough time to have the community ask any questions that they want. Alright, so focus your question, somebody asked a question. Don't ask it again, please. Alright, so um, Joseph, I'm gonna go with you first.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, uh, Alma, this was a really great report, and I I want to say, um, you know, I I really appreciate it, and I think that you guys are doing good work from all this. And I'm particularly happy to see that it looks like you guys um, surpassed your your um, financial goals from what was set in the budget for the last fiscal year, so that's re- that's really important. My um, uh, question that I had was, um, well, I know that there's been a decrease in the number of vacant po- uh, properties, and you guys are working hard at it. But I do know there also are some particularly challenging properties with this history of non-compliance. So what can be done about them to take them to the next level so that we can leave them out of being vacant to being sold or rented, in particular, is a time for some of them to look, uh, to look at leans on some of them.
Sure. So let me say that, uh, from the time that I came here nine years ago, there's a whole lot of difference, um, when it comes to properties, vacant properties. Um, we have seen an increased amount of properties, um, actually because we're, um, you know, sending those notices of violation, we're letting them know they need to register, and then we're also letting them know that they might get taxed two point five oh. So that is a a big, um, you know, help to actually um, getting the owners of the properties to comply and also to either move forward with um, even selling the property if they don't have a plan to actually, you know, rent it or do something um, with property. I would say that um, hotter ordinances probably would help, um, when it comes to dealing with um, vacant properties. Um, and that's something definitely um, that we've been discussing with Mr um, Kamali. Um, in the future, hopefully, we can do something like that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph. Uh, guys, um, I will need time on the clock. So make a motion because um, we have under two minutes.
Um, I motion that we add with ten minutes, cause we have residents too, ten minutes to the clock.
Be aware that that will put us beyond seven thirty for one item. Let's do, uh, can I, um, amend your motions, is there not a second, can we make it five minutes, and if we more, we'll go ahead and add more. But that way, like, you know, we stay within our, within our ways, so, um, I have an amendment to make it five minutes.
I thought the motion was for ten minutes.
And I just asked if, I just asked if I could make the friendly amendment to make it five.
Okay, I'll second that.
But Danielle, I'm asking you, since you made the original motion. Can you do five, and if we need to add more, more time, we could add more?
I, um, I amend my motion for five minutes.
Okay, and Jenny, just okay, second it, thank you so much. Alright, any discussion, objection, abstention? Hearing none, we're gonna add five more minutes to the clock. Alright, so uh, Jenny and then Danielle.
Um, Danielle had her hand up first, but I'll, uh, I don't, I don't need to ask, uh, Joseph asked the question I was gonna ask.
Okay, so you're you're sitting this one out, okay. Danielle, go ahead.
Thank you, and yeah, Joseph did ask my, uh, he asked the same question, I think that's the one that's mostly on everybody's mind. I wanted to take my time to uh, thank you, Alma, um, for a great, you you always put together really good reports, and um, I just want you to know that you are appreciated. I know your job is not an easy one. You get a lot of, you get a lot of slack from the residents, but you you stay the course, and I appreciate you anytime I have a question for clarity. Um, to send residents or anything like that, you're always willing to talk to them, and I really appreciate that. So, um, I do, and 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 your job is not an easy one, so you are appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your calm words, I'm Councilmember Carter.
Alright, thank you so much. Alright, so, um, Julie, um, do you want me to read the question, or do you want me to, um, or you wanna say the question? Which one would you like, the second one? And in the meantime, do we have any questions on Facebook?
It looks like Julie actually left.
Hey, um, okay. Can you just mute yourself, all of you guys, please? Is there any, um, any comments on Facebook, stuff? Alright, thank you so much, I'll go ahead and read it. I'm a Rainy Conference in charge of monitoring county permits violation. Alma, can you answer that one, please?
So what the city does in this case is that if we have an ongoing building permit, um, and we find that the scope of work is different, then we might notify the county, and they're the ones that have to handle um, if the, you know, building permit is not being followed accordingly.
Okay. Thank you so much, and um, I I am not gonna ask questions, but I will say, um, I appreciate you. I think that, uh, from where the department was, uh, to what it is now, we actually have a department, we didn't have one. And we have people that are trained and qualified, and um, I strongly believe they are doing what they're supposed to be doing. And for that, um, I think you guys severely down to making sure that they have their body cameras and jackets and insignia that shows who they are and accessible and friendly to the community, right? And a lot of it has to do with them also being present in in events, so that way people get to know them and not just when an infraction happens, but um, they've done pretty good, anytime I, we send something to you guys, um, you guys address it, and we are thankful for everything that's being done, and I know you have been an outstanding, you know, leader in the group, but I'm glad you put a great team together as well, okay? Alright, so that is my piece on that, and Alma, it's great to see you, and I'm pretty sure I'll see you probably next meeting. Uh, thank you for keeping us in order and making sure that we actually have um, even more nicer put-together records than we did. Uh, for a while, um, it it wasn't as clear, but uh, you managed to do that, so thank you so much for that.
My pleasure, thank you.
Alright, perfect. So we're moving on to the next uh, presentation. It is seven twenty, uh, twenty six. Presentation, discussion, Economic Development Department, first quarter report. The mayor and council receive a presentation from Mr Ronald Hopkins, Director of Economic Development, Mr Hopkins. Um, thank you for joining us as well, and the floor is yours.
So good evening, Mayor and Council, Mr Kamali. I'll be brief, alright, cause I don't have a lot to report, and I think pictures uh, speak a thousand words, so. The first item is that, oh, we're waiting the outcome of a grant I applied for. It's called the Mount Rainier Central Shopping District Facade Improvement Program, we should hear something from Governor Westmore in a couple of weeks. I applied for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. These uh, this is gonna be targeted for certain properties on Thirty Fourth Street, Rhode Island Avenue, that just need a little love. So hopefully that gets funded soon. Uh, the next project is our main street, I mean, the Thirty Fourth Street mural project, so, uh, actual voting will occur beginning tomorrow night. So the communications department's gonna send that out on via email, Instagram, I'm gonna also send it out to the businesses, and we have about a two and a half week voting period. Um, so that should take place soon. And then, and I'll do also in-person voting as well, so I'll actually go to visit the businesses, bring snapshots of all the different designs that will be available, and we'll do the online voting, in-person voting, and then we'll decide the top five candidates to move forward to the next round. Uh, here are the pictures of the Mount Rainier Commercial Facade Improvement Project, as you can see the barking lot. It was highlighted in blue, can you move it up a little more, Melissa? Yeah, it's highlighted in view, looks quite beautiful. You know, and I want also everyone to know that the property owners selected the colors. So a lot of times, you know, people think like, oh, who came up with this color concept? We work with the contractor and the property owners, we give them several options, and then they decide on what colors they wanna have on their buildings. So that's how that came about. Um, and you're seeing before and after pictures across the street, you know, where Chuck Slickers is, and what is it, forty two, forty four, fourteen, uh, Rhode Island Avenue to forty two, fourteen Rhode Island Avenue, so you can see the bus shelters were painted, you see the yellow awning on the this, uh, what is it, the mark, I can't see it, the mini mark there as well, and we color coordinated the one, the discount center mark with the green and the yellow, right, so that right next to each other, and there's D C Mini Mark, so as you can see, we did the front facade painted yellow, and today they finished the sides as well. So I didn't have those pictures yet, but that'll be forthcoming. we did the front facade, painted yellow, and today they finished the sides as well. So I didn't have those pictures yet, but that'll be forthcoming. And let's see, okay. So yes, the Melinda Miles Building, I met with three different potential occupants. One was uh Nai and Company. So she was interested in occupying the space. Uh, we haven't heard back from her yet. We're still waiting a letter of intent. Uh, Dan Quah Haven LLC. I don't think she's interested at all. We met with her, Mr. Kamali and stuff, but I think the space is too big for her needs. And then K and I Healthcare Company. We just did receive a informal letter of intent, but that's kind of impractical and unrealistic what what they were proposing. So I think that's off the table. And I'll answer questions at the end. Uh, thirty-two uh thirty-two hundred Rhode Island Avenue. The Deep I had approved their flood plan waiver on the site. I still don't know what's happening with them. I haven't touched base with them recently, but I think they're moving forward with um building on that site. And then um thirty-two ten Rhode Island Avenue. I met with um John. He's a commercial real estate broker and the owner of the property. We're gonna try to we're developing an urgent care center on there. So now they've um gonna formalize a listing. I spoke to him this evening. We're gonna go over it tomorrow to actually recruit an urgent care. And he's also willing to like build out a portion of the property to house a urgent care to make it more attractive to a potential owner. Okay, um conferences, I E D C conferences I attended in Detroit, uh D H C D Main Street, Maryland. Uh, the Power Hour went there. Gateway CDC Management and Action Meeting, attended that, M E T A. Uh, State Economic Development Directors Meeting, that's a quarterly meeting that I must attend. Uh, Prince George's County Gateway Development Authority Monthly Meetings. Yes, so yeah, so that's quite intensive, right? But it's monthly meetings. So that's with um okay, wait, confusing it to Gateway Development Authority Meetings. I'll come back to that one. I think I confused that with the Municipalities Cooperative for Economic Development Meeting. That's a meeting at uh Prince George's Economic Development Corporation with Larry Henson, all the Economic Development Directors in this in the county meet together and talk about solutions, upcoming challenges, and how we can solve them. Um, I'm a member of the Maryland Black Chain of Commerce and we have monthly Board of Directors Meetings. I'm also a member of the Legislative Legislative and Advocacy Committee. And then uh we had a business tour with Councilmember Jenny Hoffpower. And I think that was pretty insightful as well. So I'm open for any questions.
Thank you, Ron, so much for your presentation. Alright, so I'm gonna go through uh council and I'm gonna open up to the community. Um, if your community member would like to speak, please go ahead and type your name, last name, street and block number, and uh let me know if you need me to call upon you. And council, usually I call upon you. If you're gonna skip, skip, that's fine, but uh let you know. So that's usually how this works. Alright, so we're gonna go Jenny, Joseph, Danielle. Go ahead.
Um, thank you, Ron. I um I just I wanted to hear more about the thirty-two hundred um Rhode Island Avenue property and um and what what things you think that we can do as a city to um to incentivize or pressure the property owner to um to take more concrete steps towards developing that property?
So I've done all I can on my end. Um, that's a question for Mr. Kamali to answer. Because I think he's been working with Alma as far as like imposing liens and things like that on that property. Um, he's also been in contact with Mayor Benitez um to find out certain progress. So that's all the information I have, so I have to defer to them to answer that question.
Thank you, Ron. We'll come back to that. Alright, go ahead. Uh, what's it? Danielle, Joseph?
I thought you said Joseph made, but that's fine. I'll go next. Um, Mr. Hopkins, thank you so much. Um, I have been watching the whole facade, um the painting and everything on Thirty Fourth Street and down here in the circle since I got on council a little over two years ago, and I am very impressed with everything I see. Um, the 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 improvement, the the barking lot, that the blue trim on there just makes it pop. You know, and I know Heather is trying to get in touch with the original muralists to try to get that touched up too, so that'll really bring it out. Um, I have had people ask me who chooses the colors, you know, for like the the shelters and stuff. So thank you very much for answering that ahead of the game. But um I do appreciate everything that you're doing, all the efforts you're putting into to make our downtown look spiffy and sweet and 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 inviting. And and it's really nice to drive out of uh out of Britwood coming our way and to see the color as we're coming in. So it's really nice. I really appreciate all the things you do. So thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Joseph?
Uh, uh, thank you, Ron. Thank you for the great presentation. Though um I I will say I'm a little disappointed with the direction in thirty-two hundred uh Rhode Island. You know, this is a prime piece of real estate and fact that we're not um that's still stuck and we're also not hearing about like multi-story with residential given its close proximin proc proximity to such a robust transportation network. I feel like we I don't wanna like get in the way and like stop things from happening, but I I think we can do better. Um, I also, my question though was um as I guess more for the Melinda Miles Building, um had you gotten a chance to reach out to any um credit unions or any other banking type uh 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 groups to the about that property or any of the other properties that we need someone in?
Yes, we did, because I I remember you had that conversation with me earlier. So I did contact Harbor Bank. I contacted Prince George's Federal Credit Union. We don't have the density and traffic for that location. Like, you know, if it was on maybe Rhode Island Avenue, then it would be more attractive. But right now, we don't have that density. So I think like Harbor Bank is looking to Bowie Town Center, um Prince George's Federal Credit Union. They're happy with the locations and they don't wanna build that anymore. And we also found out from talking to the president of Prince George's Federal Credit Union that most people are doing their banking and things online. So a lot of times, they're not going to a physical location as much. So that's uh another deterrent. But I I'll keep, you know, I'll keep searching and trying to find somebody to occupy that spot.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Um definitely, it's been a lot of work, Ron. I remember when we started this, I mean, from growing the department, you know, the million-dollar incentive funds and so many things that people thought that, you know, we were crazy to to dream to even think that the city could change this much, right? I don't think nobody imagined we could we could do as much as we did, right? But obviously, we proved them wrong and um we were working hard, making sure that we provide um in so many ways. Um, aside where you put in this report, the other things that are are not being there because you give in other reports is the assistance when it comes to websites, to like social media, when it came to COVID training, when it came to access access to capital, to banks and um videos for the stores and stuff like that, right? There's been a lot of stuff that's been happening that maybe people don't realize is happening because they sometimes realize it's just a painting on the outside, but it's a lot more than that when it comes to be able to support the businesses. And there was a question about thirty-two hundred. Uh, we were we managed to help them to clear some permits and they are back at doing more work. Um, part of the problem that they faced was in the last presentation they gave us a few months back that there was a water table and they needed to adjust to that and also meant that the permit require a lot of money for them to um clear. Right? I know um we wrote in behalf of the city um letters to be able to support them. And we have follow-up and at least they've been able to clear some of the permits, but it's still a long way um it's still some way to go. But I'll tell you that both Mr. Kamali, but also the team has been um very much on top of it. Um, and so if you see um a mess, grass or whatever, they have been cited. They have paid their dues and if they have to go to court, they go to court. So I don't want people to think that because they might see no movement there, that things are not working on it. But it it is definitely um a longer process that we will have liked it to happen, but I think in the half of the city we've done, we continue to do as much as we can to try to try to support them with anything they need. Um, within reason, obviously. Um, they still need to abide by the county and city rules regardless and that's where we're at. But Ron, thank you so much for um being able to uh think outside the box in many ways. I know that right now we're working through the whole Main Street um process as well. And um and that hopefully opens up even um more grants um that they are. And I'll be checking with um with the governor's team as well to figure out where we are with that grant and and hopefully we could get it because that definitely will give a lot of love to to the businesses that that definitely need it. Um, and again, a lot of these projects are being done heavily without city money. You know, through grants and so on. And and I think that sometimes people when uh they say like, why are they putting so much tax money? I mean, like you, we do realize that um the businesses also pay taxes to the city. And we have heavily leveraged um the grants to be able to do as much as as we've done and gone ridiculously creative. So thank you for that. Okay?
Okay, I just I forgot. So I just wanted to address um, I guess my mind. I'm so used to seeing the acronym of P G G D A, but that's um Prince George's Gateway Development Authority. I'm actually the board chair and I do meet with the the mayors of the six municipalities, Brentwood, North Brentwood, Bladensburg, Cottage City, Colmar Manor, and Mount Rainier on a monthly basis. And our job is to create a comprehensive plan for the region. So but I was thrown off, like I'm looking at this like it's usually like P G D. I'm like, what is that? So that's why I apologize for making that blunder.
That that's no problem, you know. Um, we definitely spent a lot of time working for the area because we're trying to uplift. This one, people say like, do you need more organizations? I mean, like, we have plenty. We just created another one. Because all those organizations need to be funded, if not, they're just in paper. So thank you for your work on 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 helping, you know, ferment the seed when it comes to that. Alright, so I don't see anything on the chat anybody wants to ask or say something. And do we have anything on Facebook? Um, Jared? Thank you so much. Alright, Ron, thank you so much for your presentation. Okay, and um continue doing um continue doing great work.
Good, thank you. Good night, everyone.
Alright, good night. I know. Good night and enjoy your rest of the day off. Uh, the night of. Uh, let me see. Um, Presentation Discussion in Orange Codifying the Mount Rainier Green Team and Disbanding the Mount Rainier Environmental Protection Board. Councilmember Jakuda will present an ordinance to Mayor Council on codifying the Mount Rainier Green Team and disbanding the Mount Rainier Environmental Protection Board. And as a point of information, Joseph is our Green Team liaison to the city. And Joseph, I'm not gonna talk anymore. Go ahead. The floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Um, so this ordinance that we're putting forth tonight um tries to do a couple things. Um, first, uh the there back in uh two thousand and seven, there was an environmental board that was um founded um in the city called the Environmental Protection Board. It uh consisted of five members, had some specific goals that were involving biodiversity and climate change. Um, and over time, though, the uh there was a sort of a change in the way we did the environmental work and that was because of the Sustainable Maryland Program. It it came about and we established a Green Team. Um, and that the Green Team was specifically there to convene uh numerous committees in the city, including the Environmental Protection Board, but also the Tool Shed, the Business Association, the Bike Co-op, Tree Commission, Design Review Board, Mixed Use Town Center uh Committee, um as well as resident other residents. Um, the because of this, the Green Team was set up with just having a chair and no other appointed positions. And um the Environmental Protection Board pretty much faded away after that. It kind of got subsumed by the Green Team, but it was never, this was never formally done. So uh what this uh res ordinance uh aims to do is, one, to codify the Green Team. Um, I would also note that um some of our some of our uh committees are codified um and some are just uh created through resolution. Um, doing the research for how the Environmental Protection Board came about and its history, I definitely found it would is very helpful to have these codified because you can just go to our city code and find the Police Review Advisory Board. You can find a Design Review Board. You can find the Arts Commission. You don't have to dig through years and years of resolutions to try and find what you're looking for. And since our resolutions go back to two thousand and eight, which is awesome, um it's still limiting. And so we're that 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 was sort of the impetus for wanting to put the Green Team into the uh uh into the the code. Also, it expands the number of seats on the Green Team from the one chair to five. Um, that is sort of the mimic the original Environmental Protection Board and also have a fuller roster of folks making decisions um as part of the board. Uh, the the team. It also continues the um convening power of the Green Team to bring other committees together that work on Sustainable Maryland, but also essentially assigns them essentially the same types of tasks that the Environmental Protection Board had related to climate action, biodiversity. Which they're kind, like I said, they're kind of already doing, but this just formalizes it. And then also thanks to the Environmental Protection Board members um for the service they provided to the city at the time and disbands that board. So we only have one uh environmental uh committee in the town. Um, and I guess that's about it. Um, so I will open this up to any questions you have in me.
Thank you, Joseph. Um, and he has a document there, so it's in your package, and the first official reading um will be on our legislative meeting. Okay, so any feedback you also have, you guys go so send it to him prior to the meeting. Alright, um, I'm gonna go around. Let me know if you have no questions and then we'll move on, alright? So since there's only two of you guys, I'm gonna go Danielle, Jenny.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Joseph, thank you so much for uh all the work you put into doing this. Um, I read through, you know, your proposal when you emailed it to us and it made perfect sense and uh so you know, with all your history with the Green Team and all of these things here in the city, I uh I trust your uh your judgment, your decision, and uh I appreciate it again. Thank you.
Okay, Jenny?
Um, thank you, Joseph, for um working on this and I I share your love of uh codifying things. So um, I appreciate that. I um just a a question I uh forgot to ask you previously. Um, you had uh suggested it be five members and in uh one of the whereas is um you list like the Mount Rainier Business Association, the Tool Shed, the Bike Co-op, the Tree Commission, the Design Review Board, Mixed Use Town Center Review Committee. I was wondering if you were um thinking that that there would be like kind of a representative of each of these groups would be nominated to it? Or if it would just be broad, like whoever from the city um wants to be on the board and and would be communicating with members of these groups if they're if they're not represented?
Um, the the vision for that, thank you for the questioning, uh Councilmember, um the vision for that is that there would be five members that are just for the Green Team itself. Um, because while the Sustainable Maryland um is obviously an important part of what they would do, they would that would not be their only purpose. It would also be to help with the climate resolution, to help with the uh pollinator gardens and other biodiversity stuff. So the idea would be that the one of the things they would have to do, though, is convene all the other committees. Think it, I I think I said once a year um in in the in the codification that would um so that they would meet. You know, one year they would plan for um what they're gonna do to for the next Sustainable Maryland certification. And then second year would be to say what we're, how how thing are things going with implementing? Because obviously, all these different committees have a role in our sustainability, you know, with the Community Garden or the Tree Commission or even the business, well, you know, the the former Business Association would have as well. Um, and then the third year would be more of convening to put it all pen to paper and fill out the that uh the paperwork to get the Sustainable Maryland, because there's a lot of documentation involving and having all the different heads of the different committees to know what they've done and um would be important. But the idea wouldn't be that the other com- the other committees would only be sending someone once a year likely. Um, and I think that's how I had it written, but if it didn't seem that way, please let me know.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Joseph. Um, I'm Okay, thank you, Joseph. Um, I'm gonna move to see if anybody in the community has any questions for us, anything? Anything on Facebook? Uh, Jared? All right, I don't see nothing on, well, there's, I don't see nothing here. There's no one here right now. All right, uh, Joseph, thank you so much for putting this document together and definitely, um, big thank you to, um, the wonderful volunteers. So the Mount Rainier Environmental Protection Board, I think, has been maybe more than ten years since we had it active, so this definitely codifies and I think that heavily, um, what we have been working on for all of our communities. I know that, um, Councilor Woodrow has been very good at that as well as codifying, like, you know, the different information to make sure we have, uh, records. So, um, there's a rotation on when the records are submitted that our team is, um, is in charge of, right? So once we approve, then they submit it and then, um, we'll be able to, then they check to make sure it's there. Okay, so that'll be like the next steps after, you know, obviously to reading passing and then, um, they'll submit it and it'll be there for any future records. And we're also doing basically the same thing for any committee that we have to make sure those records are codified and you'll be seeing if there's any more, a little bit of this, we side with the red committee and we side with other committees as well. All right, garden committee as well. All right, Joseph, um, thank you so much and, um, be ready to do a whole read-through on the next meeting, okay? Thank you. Uh, moving on to item number six, um, uh, Presentation of Minutes, the city clerk will present the minutes for October seventh legislative meeting to the mayor council. The minutes are in your package. Um, thank you, Melissa, as always, for submitting them on time and making sure we are doing what we're supposed to doing. Send any suggestions to her and it's a presentation of, that we're ready to vote for the legislative meeting. Okay, moving on to item number seven, adjournment. Can I have a motion on the floor?
I'll move to adjourn.
Can I have a second?
Second.
You guys look so happy to adjourn. All right, so thank you guys so much. Any discussion, objection, abstention here, none? This meeting has come to an end at seven fifty-two PM. Have a good night. Thank you, staff. We appreciate you so much. Okay, bye.
Bye.
Thank you, staff.